Well, welcome to the city council meeting. Not the work session, but the real thing. Regular meeting for January 3rd, it's seven o'clock. And we would like to acknowledge we have the whole council less one member tonight. Councilmember Montoya is not feeling well, and so she's been excused for the evening. And we'll move on. I would like to ask if there is someone that would lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I will.
Thanks, Rod.
Please repeat after me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to ask if somebody would be willing to give us an invocation or an inspirational thought?
Mayor, I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together as a council and to have members of the city here with us. We're mindful of our responsibilities and duties to serve and to do those things that would be in the best interest of our community. We pray that thy spirit would be here to assist us in doing that. We're grateful for this holiday season that we've had and grateful for the spirit that we felt as we thought more of thee and thy son. More grateful for him and offer this prayer in his name, the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Like to make a notice if we need a declaration of any potential conflict of interest that any of the council might have tonight. Okay, thank you. And move right into the consent agenda. We're gonna go through these three items fairly quick so we can just keep moving with the meeting. I do know that Emily had found a item that needed to be corrected, or was it?
I'd given some minor edits on the minutes from the last meeting just to make sure for clarification, but we can just adopt those accordingly.
Scribner type error?
Yeah, just again, just making sure that things are clear and how they were stated and what the intent was.
Okay. Are there any questions on either of the minutes? Can I have a motion to? Well, let's move on to the expenditures. We have bills since the 17th of December that amounts to $779,102. Have you been able to go through those? Are there any questions or concerns where any of that lies? I think we've got a pretty good handle on the budget as we've been going through it. We're fine to comb over and over again. But are there any changes or anything that you did have a question on? Then I would entertain a motion that we accept the consent agenda as proposed with those Scribner changes that Norm had brought out.
So moved.
Second?
Oh, second.
Roll call. Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
That passes. And we can move straight into the public forum. And the first item on our agenda are recognitions. And so Rod, are you prepared for that?
I didn't prepare anything formally, but I can say a couple words.
I think, I think we all could.
Mr. Mayor, council. We're here to formally recognize Corporal Woodland's retirement. He began his career in 2002. Had a minor lack in judgment where he went to Payson City for five years or so.
That's not what you said before.
Well, I was trying to be kind, right? So he found his way home a few, five or six years later and spent the last decade or so at his home here in Santaquin. And Russ has always been a solid performer and we hate to see him go, but we wish him the very best in whatever he chooses to do. And that's about all I have, mayor. Maybe Russ would like to say a few words.
I think he would.
He likes to speak about as much as I do.
I don't have to be here. I appreciate the opportunity I've been given here in Santaquin. Like Chief said, I started out here. And went to Payson to learn a hard education, came back, finished up here at home, and Santaquin's always been my home. I love Santaquin. The citizens here, council, and mayor, I've known everybody for years, it seems like. Chief Hurst was my first sergeant. And one of the guys that hired me, gave me a chance and I appreciate it. It's been a good run and I'm happy to be moving on. Thank you.
It's been an honor to work with you. Don't go too far.
I think we should hear from his wife.
A lot less.
I gave her a warning as she came anyway.
Don't turn it up. This is absolutely beautiful. An exceptional one. Can you look over the top of it?
Yeah. Hold it up just a little bit. There you go. Awesome. Thank you.
This, to the rest of you, this is his service revolver and his badge. And Chief Hurst has been able to put this together coming along with the department. And the city gives this to you as your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And if we need you back, you gotta.
And keep your certification.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Blaming the bill. Then there was one.
We have one, one more, the volunteer of the month. Colleen, would you like to give that to us?
Would you like Randy to stand up here with me? Or what?
As soon as you start introducing him, unless his face goes red.
Okay, well, the January 2023 volunteer of the month is Randy Pledgie. So line up, Randy. All right. Now, I hope I can read this. Randy's an avid mountain biker and trail maker. Because of his passion for good biking trails in our area, he got involved with the Santaquin Prospector View Park and Trailhead project in Santaquin Canyon. Mayor Olson has gotten to know Randy through this project. And in his words, he stated, "Over the summer of 2022, I have had the opportunity to get to know many people who have volunteered hours and machines to the Prospector View Park and Trailhead in Santaquin Canyon." It's Santaquin's newest park consisting of 120 acres, built on the slopes of the canyon just below Nebo Wilderness Area. Many of these people stand out as real volunteers with equipment, time, and commodities they have through their businesses or have volunteered their time. Randy stands out in this group because he not only contributed labor and equipment, but saw the vision of the park and wanted to become part of it. He loves the outdoors and is interested in these trails and sees the potential in our new park. By early November 2022, Randy had logged a few hundred hours designing paths for trails and marking them to meet as good of grade as the mountain would yield. With the envisioning and marking required, those hundreds of hours were spent trading off with others, other operators, yet doing the lion's share of the actual digging. The trails became his babies. And the other operators tried to maintain a standard acceptable to Randy and the mountain bike community that would use the trails. Mayor Olson continues, "I want to thank Randy for his effort, forethought, and hoeing to the end of the row." He spent hours in the cold seat in snow and rain and then followed up the next day only to continue on with his work. Randy is a contractor and has freely given up time he could have been working to support his family, to each of us as Santaquin residents. We will all greatly benefit from his outlook and volunteer work. He is such a deserving, he is, he is much deserving of this recognition. Randy and his wife Melissa have lived in Santaquin since 2010. They have three sons. One is married and they have two grandchildren. His youngest son used to race mountain bikes in high school and needed practice trails close to home. This is how Randy got involved for making bike trails in our area in his free time. He enjoys camping, motorcycle riding, and anything outdoors. Thank you, Randy, for all of your good effort and time. And we are very honored to honor you as the volunteer of this month.
Speech?
I just don't have anything prepared.
Make something up. That'd be good.
I feel bad getting this award to so many people that did so much, especially the mayor. I mean, I could name lots of names, but I had fun doing it. Better than going to work.
It doesn't pay well, but no, the blessings are incredible. I, I don't know that I could say enough, but to get to know Randy and what he's done, honestly, I would do a little work in the morning and we, we realized right up front that we needed a machine that we could, and so I got that. And then it got to the point that when I'd work a few hours in the morning and he would be there, he was really reluctant to give it up to me for probably two reasons. One, he's a much better operator, but you know, he liked that machine as well as I did. So, and it was fun. So we have something for you. Why don't we get the whole family up? We usually do that.
I was reading the rules on the door and I realized we're breaking like every rule.
Be careful. This is where the judge sits. Let's see. Cuddle in somehow. This has some good things. It's a great family.
Awesome. Hey, that looks good. Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it was a year ago tonight that I shocked the city and the council that wanted a new park. And right now, we've got about six miles of trail included. We've had an extra mile and a half permitted to us through the forest service. We're working on connecting trails. And well, I'll tell you what, there are a lot of people that are using it. If you could go up there and see the people that hike it, snowshoe it, and bike it on fat tire bikes, you would be impressed. Now, you know, we already get a lot of feedback from people that are all over the state coming to see it. I was up there the other day and there were people to go, getting ready to go ice climbing. My wife and I and the dog stopped and talked to them for a few minutes. And they, there were three Asian people that wanted to climb the world-renowned ice climb that we have in Santaquin Canyon. But they said on the way back, "We wanna look at this." This is only adding to it. So we are going to have a real feature here that will draw a lot of people. And I'm excited, you know, just with everything we've accomplished so far. And thank you for the support in every way. So Stephanie, I'd like to give you a few minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to formally invite you guys to our chamber annual dinner that we have every January. It's January 19th from 7:00 to 9:00. And as we usually do, the city will get eight seats to come, but you are more than welcome to bring spouses or others, invite other city workers or whoever you wanna bring. And I can help you guys order those tickets or, and register you when you have, who you want to come.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna go through Jason and we'll get those numbers to you.
Okay. Yeah, so we have until January 12th until we need that final number from you. But it's gonna be awesome. We'll do our awards. We're gonna have a raffle. There'll be a photo booth. It's just a good opportunity for all the local business owners. One, to honor them, and then also give them an opportunity to get together and network. And it'll be a really nice evening. It's gonna be at the Clarion in Payson and.
Same place then.
And then also, just as a short quarterly report, I know many of you already know, but Michelle Lines resigned and we have a new director at the chamber, Jim Rowland. He's hit the ground running. He's super active. He's sending us all sorts of information. And he's been very involved. He was previously our treasurer, but he's gonna do a great job and is really getting a lot of people excited about the chamber and recruiting new, new businesses. So, yeah, that's all from the chamber.
Okay, any questions? We're looking forward to a bunch of things this year. Some grand openings, our, the opening of our new city hall. And we want to make sure the chamber is part of every one of these, especially all the new businesses. So thank you for all that you do and have done for the last year. It's been good to work with you. Okay. How about any new businesses? And?
Mayors are public, public forum.
There's nobody signed up for it.
There wasn't anybody, yeah. So also, do you wanna go over the building permits and the business licenses as well?
Yeah, so mayor and council, as you can see up on the screen, being January 3rd, there's no building permits that have, have been issued yet this year. But you, you can see the total for the calendar year 2022, which is a total of 263, which is made up of, of 146 single-family and 117 multifamily dwelling units. There's also two new commercial spaces. And so it, obviously that calendar year with the economy and, and inflation has been a little bit of a dip from what we saw in, in the calendar year 2021. The fiscal year, however, was, was pretty comparable. However, with the things I just mentioned, you can see the trend is, is, things are pretty low in relation, we're only to 50 building permits year-to-date. And that's again fiscal year, so from, from July 1st to, to now. So it's about half the year. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of where we're at. And obviously, the council's been, been very involved in, in making sure that you're accounting for and recognizing the, the, you know, the, the growth slowing down a little bit. So, yeah, that's, that's the report of building permits. I took a little bit of extra time because of the fact that it's the end of the calendar year. But does anybody have any questions about building permits? Okay, and then you can see we have the two, two new businesses to report on. And one of them is a home occupation, which is really a lot of, just the paperwork done at the home. And then the other one is a, a food truck, which, which is, I guess would be a commercial business, but I think they're gonna do the paperwork out of their home as well. Food trucks, if the, the business is licensed in the city, then generally the sales tax from those food trucks go to the city where, where the, the commercial license is. So this food truck may be doing a lot of business in other communities, but, but the business license was, was acquired and, 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 and issued here in Santaquin City. So that is all I had to report for building permits tonight and business licenses.
Any new businesses?
Those, those are the ones. Those are the business licenses that we have. Obviously, there's, there's some businesses that are, are underway from a construction standpoint. You can see some of the, the work that's being done around. McDonald's is broken ground. The, the Fizz is, is mostly, you know, up in vertical and there's, there's still some work that needs to be done there. And then we have applications for other businesses that are, that are in. We have a, an AutoZone application for property here on Main Street. And so, yeah, there's still things happening. And, and I think with this new year and, and hopefully with the economy settling a little bit, that there, we're expecting that, that some, some work will, will ramp up a little bit. But it's always kind of a guess based on how things go. So that's, that's kind of what's happening in the, the world of business and, and building.
I would like to report that I had a meeting with Blake Murdoch the other day. Lot of questions about how things were going and perception. One thing that he did say is, and, and they have picked up their building permit, I believe, and they're ready to go. Their contractor has asked that they hold off until towards the end of February so that they don't get involved with the mud and, and the freezing, especially with concrete that they need to pour. So they're getting ready to take off on all of that. All their engineering is done. And they are making a big investment in Santaquin. It is very big and.
Just a correction, mayor, on that. They, they have not picked up their building permit, but they have site plan approval. And we anticipate, once they get the re, the revised plans for the site plan, the building permit will be right behind that. So they're running concurrently. But they have not picked up a building permit yet.
He said yes to that question, so I assumed it was. So, okay, maybe that's one of those where they wrap in site plans and everything else to follow. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think it was really good. And we have a lot of movement. I had some great meetings even today that have implications with restaurants in the future and some other new businesses, as well as some changes that I think will make a difference with some of the lots and some of the, some of the areas that we've wanted to improve on. And looked really good, so. Wanna move on to the resolutions on MAG funding agreement for the regional roadway connectivity study. I know this is January 1st and it was February 1st or 2nd last year. And I met with MAG and laid out kind of a plea and kind of a, why are we always forgotten? And it turned into kind of a bold statement for a one-month mayor. But they promised us funding and this is the $50,000. They promised us to do the first of the study that needed to take place around 400 East and into the area of the interchange. This is kicking some of the things into gear. It is taking the funding that they promised us and getting it into action. And this is the agreement that we have to approve. Did you all have a chance to look at it? Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, then I'd ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve resolution 0101-2023 MAG funding agreement for regional roadway connectivity study.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion and seconded. Let's roll call. Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Motion passed. And thank you, MAG, for $50,000 to get this study rolling. So next one is resolution 102 for 2023, and that is Genola PD and EMS agreement. Last summer, we worked with the police chief and we're looking at all kinds of things that were funding our police as well as the tax money that went to them and all the budgetary aspects of keeping the police alive and increasing their pay so that we could keep our police. In that investigation that we went through and, and the timeframe took us months to go through and to get through all of the aspects we needed to, but we found that there was a, a big part of that, at least that would help with the payment of Genola's agreement that they had signed with us to take care of a policeman as well as EMS calls that would happen out there. And, you know, in the ensuing months, I've, I've watched very closely. I get weekly reports of who gets pulled over where and, you know, where the action is in the city and have taken mental notes as to how often there are things that are taken care of police-wise in Payson. And are, well, yeah, Payson's not a part of this. Genola. Genola was getting their money's worth and then some. Norm and I took the time to meet with Mayor Marty Larson and had a very good talk about what we have to do to keep our policemen and that they were behind times in catching up. He accepted that discussion and decision very well as we met together and thought where we needed to be, looked at the overall plan as it was presented to the council months ago. And we are now at the point that we're catching up. Genola will be reviewing and signing and they have all gone pretty much in favor up to this point. So this is us renewing an agreement that had not been brought up for the past few years and we were way behind. Now we're up with the agreement of this and I think it's equitable to both Genola and ourselves moving forward, and they see that. So any questions on it? Anything from what you read in the packet? Then I would ask for a motion to approve this agreement with Genola.
I'll make that motion, mayor.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded. Roll call. Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway?
Aye.
Councilman Adcock?
Aye.
Motion passed. Good. Then we'll send that on to Genola and they will vote on it towards the end of the month. Or whenever their council meeting.
I think it's the 17th or 18th is when they have their meeting, that they'll consider that.
So we'll know that shortly and they do know that's something that we were working on. They understood that. Next one is the state ARPA funding agreement. State ARPA funds were given, ARPA funds were given to the county and to the state to divvy out for certain projects. And we fell under those projects with the infrastructure that we needed to put in. And especially towards the new tank at Summit Ridge, the pipelines that need to connect all the way up to, oh, Fifth, Fifth South and Fourth East or Fourth West, somewhere in that area. And part of the stipulation was that we had to have lobbyists to help handle that. That lobbyist, we did hire and they did their, their job. This was interlocked funds. The state and the county would have to do it. The county did award us those funds for that project. And it's taken us, and that was at an amount of $3 million, which we were able to use. And the next one was for the same project that the state did award to us. And now we are ready to move forward with appropriating and taking care of this in the proper manner. So any statements or anything we need to go over, any questions that you might have? You know, it's hard to turn down a gift of a million dollars when you've worked this hard to get it. And we've had some good people, especially people in the background that seldom get the, the kudos for the good job that they do. And, you know, I really wanna thank Lincoln Hill, the work they did on this in particular. This was their baby. And they've done a good job. So with that, I would like to ask for. So with that, I would like to ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve an agreement with the state of Utah for the award of one million dollars in ARPA funds for the Santaquin City pressure irrigation improvements.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Uh, roll call vote. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock.
Aye.
Good to go. It's hard to turn down good money. Uh, we have Steve Larson with us and uh it's good to see you, Steve. I need to take another ride up one day, but I sure certainly don't want to fight that snow up there right now. You've made a lot of uh headway with this. Uh, we have a preliminary plan that we're going to look at tonight. Um, was John gonna do that or Jason? Are you gonna take it?
Yeah, I'll just do a a high-level introduction. There's obviously a lot of components to this development, but as you remember, this. In the subdivision process, there's a concept plan where uh no action, just a lot of feedback, uh preliminary plan and then a final plan. Uh, the final plan really covers the uh the phases of the development, so uh uh this is kind of the last. Overall comprehensive look uh of this proposed Gray Cliff subdivision. And then moving forward, there'll be individual final plans that that basically is is uh phases that that move forward or takedowns of. Of uh the different areas of the development, so. Um, that's that's very uh very simple way of putting how we've gotten to this point right now. There's obviously been. Uh, some rezones, there's been uh negotiations, there's been a development agreement approved. Um, and there's been a masquerading permit that's been issued and and as everybody can see, there's there's a lot of work being done up there and a lot of dirt that's being moved to. To make this property uh more developable for this subdivision. So just high-level summary, this is the development that is uh located east of State Road running ninety-eight at approximately six hundred north. Uh, it is currently in the uh interchange commercial or C-one uh zone and there's also some in the R-ten zone that was part of that rezoned. Negotiation and development agreement. Uh, since since that that time, um. Mr. Larson has acquired a little bit more property and that property is zone agriculture. So there is some property that that is agriculture and and there's maybe just a little corner that is is in a couple lots. Uh, but the majority of it is is either in private HOA uh open space or um. Uh, open space that's going to be dedicated to the city. So I don't see any issue with with that that zoning being there, but there may be a time in the coming months that we'll propose a rezone just to kind of clean up the zoning there. Uh, there's no sense in having open space zone as agriculture. It's probably uh more suited to be in a different zone. So, um, the the whole development consists of two hundred and seventeen single-family lots. Um, and that's on and and there's also going to be uh about twenty-six acres of of commercial property uh that. May be be further subdivided at some point in the future, but at at this point, they're they're kind of just future commercial lots that he has there. Um, the single-family lots, because of being in the R-ten zone, they range from a a a quarter lot, quarter acre lot or point two-three acres. And they range all the way up to uh just under four acre lots, um, or one hundred and sixty-six thousand uh square feet. So there's a there's a lot of uh diversity of lot sizes, uh but the the minimum being quarter acre lots. Uh, there's also fourteen point four-two acres of open space that will be improved by the uh developer. If you remember, there's a fault line that runs kind of north and south through the development and and the uh Mr. Larson's done a good job uh with his engineer to. Uh, ident- identify those areas and 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 make those areas parks because they're obviously not suitable for for uh homes to be built on. Um, and that that area will be improved by the developer and and I'll get into that here in a little bit. There's also approximately one hundred and thirteen acres uh that are up higher on the mountainside that are going to be dedicated to the city as as public open space. Uh, they do have some acreage up there as well that's that's going to be like a private HOA uh open space, but that's that's for a handful, ten or so lots that. That would have have access to that and and, you know, pay towards an HOA to to maintain that and and make use of that. So that's kind of the high-level introduction of things. Um, and you know, we can we can probably pull up the the plans and look at them closer if you'd like, but the. Um, there's a lot of engineering that's been done on this. Um, John Lindell has 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 done a great job of coordinating and working with. Uh, Steve Larson and his engineer Ken Berg. Um, we've been we trying to get all the information to to uh, you know, verify and and make sure that this can move forward. At this point in time, for purposes of the preliminary plan, we'd recommend that it move forward. There are, however, some some uh additional agreements that probably need a little bit more time to to flesh out and and work with legal on. Um, and so you can see there's a a conservation easement uh that that we need to to uh finalize. There's. A connectors agreement and a reimbursement agreement that we want to finalize. We would suggest that those be conditions of approval of this preliminary plan. That'll that'll uh uh make some progress with with this development moving forward, but but, you know, we we have all. All this information and we'll start reviewing that and and working with legal to get those things taken care of. And then in addition to those three uh site agreements and and things that need to be uh reviewed and. And uh later brought to you for your approval, there is some wat- water lines at the intersection of Cherry Lane and SR one ninety-eight that. Uh, John is suggesting be reconfigured. Uh, obviously, there's a lot of, this is a big development, so so there's some things that. Uh, are continuing to be fleshed out. For purposes of the preliminary plan and the subdivision review process, we feel like this is at a point where. Where it could get your approval with with those conditions to to kind of finalize those those last ancillary documents that that really helped this this subdivision. Uh, you know, have everything that it needs to 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 move forward, so. I think that's probably the best introduction I can give of without going into too many details, but. Uh, Norm or I are here to and happy to answer any questions that you have, or or Mr. Larson as well as the applicant can can answer any questions that you have on this development.
I I would know, yeah, Steve, you if you want to come up, that's fine. I would know that the fourteen point four-two acres. That will be developed by the developer also has participation from us. If you remember the development agreement amendment that was done. Where the restated development agreement has a a fifty-fifty combination on that where we would put in park impact fees and he would put in a like amount, a similar amount. And and equal amount on each one of those impact fees to help pay for, which makes his development much more desirable, but also makes really good leverage of. Park impact fees for the for the development itself, and that would be just the fourteen point four-two acres. The hundred and thirteen that's up higher. Is is very minimally improved with the better forest ac- fire access road and some other things, but they they won't have any irrigation or plants or. It'll it it actually ties right into a future uh some future mountain biking that might be coming that way.
He's trying to buy me off. I can tell. It isn't working. No, I appreciate you being here though, Steve.
Well, I appreciate coming. I don't know that I have a whole lot new to offer anybody. We've kind of talked this around a lot. But uh I'm here specifically just to answer any questions because it's been a while and maybe you've forgotten some of the things we've talked about in the past, so. I'm available for questions, but I don't have much more than that.
I I have a question and that has to do with possible connectivity and how we would be able to work to uh enable. The wall uh building to be.
Yeah.
Helped along.
So there are a couple of things on that. The uh, Mr. Larson has a responsibility to do some water improvements in the area. Including a PRV that is actually eligible a hundred percent for reimbursement from the city for impact fees because that's part of our system. Uh, some pipe upsizing that would help us to allow us to have bit larger pipelines in the future for in for future growth. But that's kind of the impetus of the of the connectors agreement that we've talked about. Steve and I have been on the phone with with myself and Mr. Wall. So I I've been on the phone with both of them, not in the same conversation, but but talking about these options and what can be done there. So we are trying and I believe Steve's trying in in good faith to be able to help. Further the situation and making sure that we can move things forward the very best that we can, but that's part of the. The connectors agreement would be for pipe up sizing, a PRV for the culinary side, as well as a future booster pump station and sewer lift station. That again can be uh captured through impact fees for his development a- and other developments, so I think that, does that answer your question? We are trying to go down that road and I think Steve's been more than accommodating with with Mr. Wall on that, trying to figure out how how to make that work. It's expensive. I won't I won't lie to you. It's not, I wouldn't lie to you, but it it's it's a lot of money and that may be something that that, you know. Chris wants to do something a little bit different. I talked to him about other options, but it's it's what can be done with the agreement and what can be done between the three parties to. Try and make things move forward.
Well, the one question I had, did you find out the changing that pipe size actually doubled the cost of the pipe?
It it does for a portion of it. It's it's a lot more expensive to go from eight to ten or eight to twelve. It's a lot.
Yeah, I I don't have the answer to that. Mr. Larson's provided some.
You don't have any.
Some data, but I haven't seen all of it.
I've submitted a complete budget to Norm to review and it's uh, yeah. Anytime you go from from eight to the next size up, the next incremental size, it is expensive. And the one thing I will say about my discussions with Chris is that. Um, when he says, oh, I think it ought to cost this, and then I hand him a quote and that's exactly what it is. I think that there's the sticker shock of when you add everything together, how much more it is, because he's always just measured out the pipe and this is what it should be and. All the other fittings and things like that. Um, and even though it's a bigger challenge for me to deal with Chris right now. Because it's early on and I really don't want to invest, I'm still trying really hard to help him see the uh. The uh, the the wisdom in tying into city uh water rather than trying to do it on his own.
Well, I appreciate that. I thi- I think uh all of the people that are in the city are excited for. The kind of development that you're putting forward, but also the honesty with which you've brought any of the changes and uh a good look into. Uh, how to phase this and phase it right. I was kind of anticipating that you might be ready to do some building before now, but where does that stand?
Well, I I think that the uh residential is being dictated by the uh market right now. But Mayor, I am looking really hard at uh, you know, maybe moving the commercial ahead of the residential and that's never been my, that's never been my plan.
I kind of like the sound of this.
It may be dictated that that's the uh, that's the angle that makes more sense right now.
Well, you certainly have my ear and uh I'll help you with anything I can. Can't bend the rules or anything, but uh I uh I know you're looking at everything and you saw from our report from building what's what's happening. That's not only here, it's all over and uh it has to do with interest rates and maybe interest rates more than anything. It it almost changes the minute the Fed makes that that uptick in the in the percentage and so. It's it's been easy to see but hard to swallow.
But I I am convinced that uh Santaquin is a desirable location and it will bounce back and it's just a matter of timing. I just hope that I'm smart enough to time it the right way.
Yeah, good luck.
On that hundred and thirteen acres, I actually was thinking it was a hundred and thirty. I've missed something somewhere, but. It still gives us access up into the syndicate area, those mining roads, and we'll be able to use those for. Bike and foot traffic and access to the to the Forest Service.
Yeah, so so that hundred and thirteen acres and I I'll I'll rely on what the plan says, but uh. It does border the Forest Service on all sites.
Yeah.
So it will put you in in connection with the Forest Service all the way around.
Yeah, I think the hundred and thirty came from the hundred and thirteen plus the fourteen point four-two. It was a hundred and thirty plus or minus all along. Where some of it is completely improved. The fourteen point forty-two acres is fully improved. The hundred and thirteen up on top is is minimally or not very, not improved at all. Just with better access roads.
That's the HOA area?
No, that's completely separate.
All of them.
Yeah, so the hundred and thirteen is is exclusively what the city will have, on the top, immediately adjacent to to a Forest Service property.
We're good neighbors too.
Yes, yes, hopefully.
And I can double-check on that. I, you know, this is a memo that our city engineer wrote, but looking at the plans, it looks like the the open space. That's going to be dedicated to the city is more like a hundred and fifty-five acres, so uh we'll we'll verify that. I I um.
It might it might just be a mistaken memo.
Right, right, right.
Hundred fifty-four point nine seven.
But you can see.
That's what I remembered first, so.
Your memory's better than mine.
I could have, I read it and that just stuck in my mind.
But but the one thing that has been happening that you guys can see from down at the bottom is, you know, that that access road to get you up there to make that so much more usable. Is moving ahead and proving the fact that it can be done and it will be done in such a way that uh. Your biggest challenge is going to be who you let up there because everybody's going to be there.
Uh, we met with the uh. Professor from the BYU who works with his son with a grant to uh. Put together the Bonneville Shoreline just the other day, last week, actually. It was uh Tuesday after Christmas, I think, and uh. We talked about this specifically, being able to tie right into the Bonneville Shoreline. As well as all of our other trails up the canyon, which really makes a unique destination to the whole thing. Um, it's a real good thing.
Yeah, and you'll you'll notice one of the improved parks, that Park A is designated specifically for for bike parks. It has some really interesting topography that encourages people to use their bikes for um, you know, some challenging features that'll be there.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yes, I want to know how we're going to connect the east side of the freeway to the w- west side of the freeway.
For what?
Water, sewer, PI.
I can tell you all kinds of ways, but.
So the sewer is connected a- as of right now. There is a small portion of this on the very, let me get to the map again, I apologize. On the kind of the downstream side i- in this area roughly, if I can kind of. There is a small area there that will need a a localized lift station, but everything else, gravity flows to what's already existing. In the in Cherry Lane, which is this road right by our park right here. There's actually sewer right here. There's water right here. There's pressure irrigation. All of those services are already right there, so there's no need on the pressure irrigation or the culinary to tie to the other side of the freeway. And the sewer is already tied to the other side of the freeway.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Anything else? Um, do we have a possible action that we need to do with this? Approve it and go?
Yeah, we have those those four recommended conditions of approval.
Any questions on it? And uh, I'd like to entertain a motion.
You can make a motion as easy as granting approval per the conditions on the paper. You don't need to necessarily read them all the way out, but it's up to you.
I'll make a motion to grant preliminary approval of the proposed Gray Cliff subdivision with the conditions laid out in the document.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. We'll take a vote. Councilman A- Adcock.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway. I'm trying to mix this up a little so you don't go to sleep on me. Okay. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay, thanks. Uh, it is time that we convene to the uh Santaquin Community Development and Renewal Agency, lovingly called the CDRA. I would like to entertain a motion to uh leave this meeting as a city council and go into the CDRA.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilman Sitaway.
Aye.
Councilman Adcock. All who turn into boat board members now. There's a resolution that has been put before us for the acceptance of property from Santaquin City to Santaquin uh. Development and Renewal Agency. This is uh by law what has to happen to this property so that. The CDRA, which is uh governed by the board of the city council and the mayor, who are now. Board members and board chair. And we can move this forward, accept the property and begin the uh ability to sell this. And to create an industrial park, so any questions? Read through it. We are good to go? I would like one of the board to entertain a motion a motion to accept the property from Santaquin City to the CDRA.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Board member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board member Meacham.
Aye.
Board member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board member Adcock.
Aye.
That was a mouthful. Secondly, the sale of real property. Now, I. Secondly, the sale of real property. Now, I want to state to all the throng. Of the city that are here tonight and everybody online. That they know that as of tonight, we are able as a CDRA to make transactions. And to actually have an industrial site. With this, we have made plans. The engineering is complete. We'll go through reviews tomorrow that will. Move the project online. We are ready with the sale of these to self-fund. Through the first few sales of property, the industrial park. And that means anybody that's hearing this, you can step in line and buy a piece of property for industrial reasons. But we have businesses that are relocating and we are going to present them tonight for the sale. And the first one is Resolution oh one oh two twenty twenty-three, the CDA, the sale of real property. Um, would you like to go through that?
Sure, Mayor and Council. This is the uh, the first six acres that we've talked about with the um, CDRA. Sorry, I'm trying to get my computer to. And and I'll just show you roughly the, not roughly, but the exhibit that goes along with this of the property. This is the six acres. That is up by the, up by Highway six. And um, we do have a purchaser for that that will come in and bring in a a light industrial uh, facility there with some. Potential retail and and other benefits, jobs, et cetera, that come along with that. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We've we've discussed this and. And I believe this is the a a good move for the city to move this forward.
Now, the architects have called me on this just recently. They came in and met with us through Christmas. I can't remember what day of the week it was. Last week, we spent time with uh, the uh, owners of the company. And they are raring to go.
Yep.
And they're part of the reason we're driving this. They're coming from another city and uh, this is a good win for Santaquin.
Sure.
So.
And and as the mayor indicated, this will help self-fund this this sale plus the other two will help self-fund the the uh, infrastructure that's needed. To be able to bring these businesses here. So this is fantastic. I would point out that that the agreements that are before you. To contemplate everything from a possible septic system to uh, then participating in a li- a a smaller localized sewer lift station, much like we talked about with Gray Cliffs. Uh, bringing the water lines in and there is a timeframe for all of that as well, so that we're not locked into just. It's supposed to be done tomorrow and we can't pave roads or do anything like that. So um, I I believe that we've taken into account and and again, through legal counsel have reviewed and. And believe that we have agreements that are before you that are beneficial for both us and the 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 city and the the purchasers. That will, again, as the mayor indicated, move this work forward. So this first one for the six acres is with BDS Commercial Enterprises and I'll be quiet now.
So with that, are there any questions?
I don't I don't have a question. I just wonder if Council has anything that he would like to share with us, or are we good to go?
Uh, no, I think you're good to go. I uh, we've spent quite a bit of time uh, going through uh, of these agreements, modifying them for. Uh, the individual purchasers and uh, back and forth uh, on different negotiations. So I'm satisfied that this is what the city has directed and we're gonna present it for your consideration.
Thank you.
Each of these properties have been evaluated and uh, the price for those properties were discussed and looked at. Uh, from firms that worked directly with UDOT so that we knew we were dealing with. High-quality firms who could entertain an estimate of the estimate, estimate of the property value. Honestly, through a state type of uh, of look and um. With this, I think we are moving forward tremendously. We we wanted to be at this point. Uh, that was our goal and uh, so the rest of my goal is I would entertain a motion to uh, approve. Uh, the sale of real property oh one oh two twenty twenty-three. Wow. Is there anybody that could second that that didn't say that? Everybody, everybody moved that motion and everybody seconded it. I don't know that's ever been done before, but. Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Oh, Board Member Hathaway.
Thank you, aye.
Board Member Meacham.
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway.
Aye.
The Board Mem- the Board Board Member. Board Member Adcock.
Aye.
Unanimous. That's the first piece. That that was real.
Contract that's in the packet.
That is correct, yep.
This is key and it's fun to know, hey, we are doing what we told them we were gonna do. The citizens of Santaquin and we're doing it without outside funds. We're doing it, I think, in a very novel. Legal manner and this is fun. So, thank you very much. Resolution oh one oh three, uh, the sale of real property. Do you wanna go over that?
Yeah, let me just pull up the the exhibit on that one and you can kinda see where we're looking at at that. This is uh. This is the area just to the west of the drainage channel that runs through there. If you picture in your mind. Where the Summit Ridge Parkway goes and there's a, we've built the culvert for the road to cross over. This is just to the west of the drainage channel. And the and the culvert that are in there, just as the road kinda turns back south. Um, and it's uh, three point five three acres under consideration for uh, Green Hall. Um, Construction Company. I apologize, I had to take a second to get that. I would indicate that the, as the mayor's indicated, this this number that's in here as far as the purchase price. Takes into consideration a considerable amount of fill that's gonna be needed in there. Um, and so with that considerable amount of fill, it puts it right about in the same ballpark as the other, the other uh, sale that you'll be looking at next. For a potential sale as well. So um, a- again, we're within the both of the, wi- within the ranges of the two appraisals that we've received. We've not. Uh, um, shared a whole lot with those appraisals because they still help us to be able to value the property going forward and. As we move forward, that helps us to to uh, keep that congruent. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on that.
We good?
Mentioned the prices here is uh, uh, you're expecting what you're doing with money here to increase the.
Yes.
Properties.
Yes, on on all of these sales that we're considering tonight and one other one that we're still negotiating, we do anticipate that those. Those sales and the the funds that we'll bring in will help us again to bring in all the infrastructure that's needed for these properties and we'll also make the rest of our. The the balance of our fifty-five acres much more valuable. And so we anticipate that. Future, maybe not the very next one, cause they're still kind of on the front end, but future sales after that could be potentially uh. Uh, additional value would be associated per acre as we continue to build these improvements and and improve the the. The subdivision that will be coming before you. You will be seeing a subdivision uh, process start rather quickly on that to get us going on that as well.
Again, I think we're doing things exactly right. We're well within the boundaries given when the uh. Estimates of the property value were given to us, so um. Think we're good to go. I'd like to entertain a motion from the board for the sale of uh. In Resolution oh one oh three twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Wow, that was less exciting. Can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Board Member Adcock.
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board Member Meacham.
Aye.
Board Member Hathaway.
Aye.
It passes Resolution oh one oh four twenty twenty-three, the sale of real property through the CDRA.
So Mayor and Council, this is the last one that we'll consider tonight. Again, there is one other one that we've been working on and just haven't been able to put it together just yet with the. With the property purchasers. This this potential property sale is just to the west of the one that we just considered and this would be for Hyde Homes. Uh, and it's three point four through four acres. Again, it's cons- it is higher in value because it needs less work compared to the one next to it. A- a- and again, I think this uh, helps us to be able to move these forward and and get it so that we can have a subdivision out there that would. Uh, it continue to increase the value of the rest of our property out there. Happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Any questions at all? Um, do you wanna say that this is a potential of four to five businesses that will be involved in that area? Possibly in the near future. That's ongoing uh, talks that we're having. And uh, they're very positive at this point. So.
I would note on this one that there is an option for additional property purchase in the future over the next two years and that's something that's different than the other agreements. That's just something that. Again, was part of the negotiation and and put that before you um.
But it also does put in there stipulation of rise over time.
Right.
And uh, I think that was very good. We actually tried to get a little more and we just had to negotiate to where we are. So, I think we're in good shape.
Brad, did you have something else on that?
Just just to clarify too, that uh, these three agreements uh, are all in the packets with all of the detail there. So if there are any questions on it.
Right.
We're available to answer any questions regarding the details that are in the agreements.
Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion from the board for Resolution oh one oh four twenty twenty-three, the CDRA sale of. Uh, real property.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Boy, you.
Getting quieter.
You go from real fast to, okay, we'll get there. Board Member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board Member Meacham.
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board Member Adcock.
Aye.
This is great. Now we're moving forward. I would like to entertain a motion to. Uh, leave this uh, Community Development and Renewal Agency. Portion of the meeting and reconvene into the regular city council meeting.
So moved.
Board Member Meacham.
Second.
Made a motion, seconded by Board Member Adcock, Board Member Hathaway.
Aye.
Board Member Meacham.
Aye.
Board Member Sitaway.
Aye.
Board Member Adcock.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in the regular city council meeting and we've changed. We're now the mayor and the council. So uh, we're back in the regular meeting. We've taken care of the sale of the property. We will notify those people. What will happen next is they will uh, bring in a signed agreement as well as earnest money. That they have agreed to put down on the properties. Uh, these are good companies. Every one of these companies, really, every one of these three. Came to me on their own, which was a little bit different and uh, because I've been trying to find so many others. The next company, uh, I had a chance to work with them and we will actually uh, have a meeting with them very shortly. They had two of their board members that were sick over Christmas and uh. We tried to set up two different meeting times, three different days and uh, it just didn't work out or we would have had them here. They are an exceptional company. They are a good company to bring in and I wished we could have had this done. Three months ago because we would have had another great company and uh, I still miss losing them. They were incredible. Uh, we have talked to some exceptional businesses. Uh, Jason and I met with some people. Norm and I have met with others and uh. I, I think in the future, now that we've got this rolling, we're gonna have a home base for people to slide into and uh. We will keep working on it. It's now, there there's still work to do. But the hard push over the last few months, well, many months, has landed us in a place where. It's gonna make a little difference and a little more difference and a little more difference. And so, I thank the council. For the support and the time that you have taken to go through all of this and sit with us in meetings and, you know. Make sure that you understand and uh, I compliment the staff and legal for helping us through this. We are all brand new at this and uh, we've accepted the the responsibility, put it on our shoulders and. We're moving ahead and uh, I like this. So, thank you all. It's everything you guys have done. Thanks. Uh, there's nothing else that we need to do with that, other than you'll get the notifications out and we will be underway. And like I said, tomorrow morning, we have a meeting with the uh, engineering firm. We'll be ready to kick off. The the work that needs to be done. That's on target. I like it. Okay. Uh, reports from the staff first.
Yeah, I can go. Mayor and Council, just wanna give you a heads up of of some of the applications that are coming through the process and then uh. Uh, being reviewed or or being recommended so that uh, uh, it could could end up on your agenda. So, next Tuesday, we'll have a a development review committee meeting. On that, we'll have a pro- proposed preliminary plan for hollow flats. This is the property that. Uh, was recently annexed in the city or known as the Tanner Annexation. Uh, I think technically had to go by a different name because that that name was already used, so. The name of that subdivision will be Hollow Flats. Uh, we also have a a proposed subdivision uh, concept plan for a commercial subdivision. This is gonna be uh, Phase Three. Of the the Ridley's property. So the uh, uh, there's two new lots that will be created by this. If you remember in Phase Two, there were three lots. Uh, we have uh, approved site plans for McDonald's and an approved site plan for. A uh, tag and go car wash. Uh, so this will be a couple new lots that are just north, they're kinda next to the freeway. We also have a concept plan for a subdivision on the the Irkenbrack property. Uh, you remember there's a development agreement there um. That that uh, kind of out outlines how that development will look. And so we'll we'll be reviewing that that concept plan in the official subdivision process. Uh, we also have a couple other commercial uh, projects. I mentioned earlier when when reporting on on building permits, business licenses. Uh, we have an AutoZone commercial site plan that has already been looked at by DRC once and it may be coming back for. For further review based on red lines they've re- they've received. Uh, we also have a Holiday Gas Station is looking to uh, expand. Um, and so there's there's gonna be a site plan associated with that. Um, and then we have another site plan for for a project the Nebo School District is doing to to uh. Uh, have some structures for for their um, uh, FFA of agricultural type. Uh, activities that they do over the high school. Uh, there's also a a traffic control request uh, that we'll be looking at. That's the intersection of three hundred east and four hundred south. So. A lot of things being looked at at DRC, uh, some of which will just be looked at and approved by DRC because of uh. Uh, you know, the way the code uh, uh, spells it out as being permitted uses or whatnot, but. Um, mostly related to those site plans, but the 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 subdivisions, that's just the the uh, start of that process for those. Planning Commission meeting. Uh, being the new year, uh, we'll have the chair and vice chair nominations take place. Uh, we've got a a number of of public hearings that are set. Um, again, because a concept plan, there's no action. We have a public hearing and and uh. Review by the Planning Commission of of a couple of the same subdivisions, namely the the Ridley's Phase Three subdivision and the Irkenbrack. Uh, concept plan. We also have two other public hearings for proposed uh, amendments. Uh, one of those is is amendment of the general plan, uh, specifically the moderate income housing. Um, a section of of our general plan. Uh, if you remember, we we submitted that to the state. And there were some things that the state wanted to to see done a little bit, um, not necessarily differently, but have a little bit more detail. Uh, so that it's in compliance with those state requirements. So we'll be looking at those um, those changes and and. Um, and uh, there may be a recommendation uh, for it to come back to the city council for your your consideration of approval. The other uh, amendment that we have a public hearing for is related to um. A section of code related to the Central Business District area. We have. This is actually kinda goes in conjunction with the AutoZone uh, application. There's there's some language there that we think probably needs to be reconsidered. Based on on kind of the way development's happening in the area. Specifically, this is related to a requirement that requires buildings be two stories. Um, so we 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 feel like this is a an amendment that that uh, needs to be looked at a little closer and and reconsidered and and. And so we'll we'll be presenting that to the Planning Commission and that would be another one that would probably get a recommendation and and come forward to the the city council. That's what I have for now. There's a, there's, like I say, there's there's a a lot of things that I I feel like are are showing interest in in uh. Getting approval from the city and so um, we'll we'll continue to to manage uh, those applications as they come through. And so, um, we'll, we'll continue to, to manage, uh, those applications as they come through. That's upcoming meetings. Just a couple other things for you. I s- I sent an email to the, the mayor and council just before Christmas. There is an event, uh, that the Utah League of Cities and Towns in conjunction with, with Zion's Bank is, is going to be holding. This is next Monday, January ninth, from nine A M. to, to one o'clock P M. This is, uh, in Midville. They have a speaker who is gonna really help, uh, cities kinda understand, uh, value in their community and how to, to maximize that value. Uh, this is a, a speaker I've, we've seen before and, and this is something that I'd highly recommend that, that you go to. Uh, I think this is an opportunity that the Utah League of Cities and Towns in conjunction with Zion's Bank is, is doing to really help educate and, and, and help, uh, uh, cities understand how to, to best leverage uh, the value of, of some of the land that they either own or, or, or just, uh, real property in general in, in, in our community. So, uh, that is something that I'm gonna need an R S V P for. So, I, I know I've, I've heard from, from, I think the mayor is planning to go. Uh, Norm and I will also be there. Uh, if you could, let me know as soon as possible so I can register you. That would be great. Again, that's next Monday, January ninth from nine to one up in Midville. So, I'll, I'll probably send out a follow-up email, uh, before I, I start registering people. But just be thinking about that and, and let me know if that works for you. Also, next Wednesday, January eleventh, just wanna make you aware that there will be a city, uh, a city lunch for, for employees. Uh, and, and we invite you to come to that if, if you're available. Um, I think other than that, I think that's all I have for tonight.
Chamber banquet two on the nineteenth.
Yeah, yeah. And if, and if you can R S V P, if, if that's something you can go to, just, just let me know. And I'll, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, you know, kinda gather all, all those R S V Ps and I'll, I'll just give one to Stephanie right that way. It's, she's not receiving a whole bunch from Santaquin. She's, she's got a number of, which, which elected and appointed, uh, officials from Santaquin will be going. That would be great.
Okay, Norm?
So Mayor and Council, just a couple of things. The mayor asked me offline from the meetings tonight to report on the clock tower. There are three faces of the clock tower that are not functioning right now with the, with the backlighting. There's some, been some electrical issues. It's under warranty and we're working on getting that taken care of with the manufacturer. It's taking us a little more time than we anticipated, but it is under warranty. So I don't see any concern with getting that taken care of. Um, second of all, did you wanna visit about the seventeenth, the meeting on the seventeenth? With the, with the open house, the public forum, the, do you wanna announce that? Do you want me to announce that? What would you like to do there? Now I've opened.
That was the day we were going to do it.
Yes, and, and we can still.
Feel comfortable, we could go, go ahead and move that? Is there anything on the agenda that would preclude that?
At this point, there's nothing on the agenda for the next meeting. And so we could certainly do that on the seventeenth if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, there, and we were kinda backing out of it a little bit because.
We didn't know.
Didn't know exactly where we would be with all of the.
I see there could, there could likely be those two amendments if they get a recommendation from the planning commission.
Yeah, if we do, do that, it'd be a short amount of business and then straight into kind of what we're doing, where we've been, where, how we're going, you know, when we're gonna get there.
So, yeah, I think your vision is to, to share like a state of the city address, something of that nature. And then just open it up for public comment and, and questions by the public. It would be more, more of an open house style, would still be in here. But we would just open it up to folks and, and let them come and talk to the council and mayor. That's kinda been the mayor's vision. Um, so at, at your direction, we'll go ahead and plan that for the seventeenth and we'd like to let the public know that.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that and get it, get it on that, uh, agenda.
Sure.
We do have to publish.
Yep.
And then, you know, if we get a lot of people that say, hey, we wanna be there, we'll, we'll wanna take a real close look at, can we house that many people here? And I think what we're looking at is trying to keep the number in the forty to fifty range. And that would leave us in this building. I start getting more than that, then we're gonna have to figure out where we're gonna go. But, uh, we'd, at this point, I would like to just include anybody, you know?
So that'll be for our January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting at seven P M.
Good.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't mind, I'd like to maybe put a little more emphasis on getting that word out to the public.
Yep.
I don't know what channels would be the, the best, but maybe even a banner, you know, like the banners we put up. I, I'd really like participation, you know, if we can get people to come.
And I know that's the mayor's goal as well. So we'll, with the, the reason we haven't done that yet is because I wanted to, we, we, we kinda needed to see how tonight goes and where we were at and what was gonna be left over, if anything, and, and how big the agenda was gonna be for the seventeenth. But as of right now, it looks like it's gonna be fairly okay. And so we could certainly continue to have this, this discussion like we're talking about. So we will get that word out starting tomorrow and, and get that published.
And, and what I wanted to ask too is if any of you, and we'll include Betsy on this and get word to her, like to make sure we bring up any point in particular that I may overlook. Let's make sure that you, uh, send it to me in an email separately. And I'll try to take care of it that way. And, uh, we'll build up how we want it, this whole thing to proceed. And, uh, the most important thing is, we're gonna have a, a city council meeting. We'll be brief in the business we need to take care of. And we'll be as long as we need to, to answer questions and to give an honest, what have we done for this city in the last year? It's a chance, uh, if you would like to speak for a little bit of time or whatever, uh, let me know. I'll give you the floor. Or if in the middle of it, you just shoot me in an airplane, we'll make sure we get it going, okay? I, I want this to where the people can say, wow, this is what they've done. And, and there are some important, uh, facets to this that I believe need to be out there. And there may very well be some tough questions that somebody may just want an answer for. You know, I spent, I spent most of an hour the other day, pretty close to Christmas, uh, on the phone with a gentleman who was upset about the snow that was being plowed from the street that covered the sidewalk. And he had some valid points. Um, and, and there are, is ten other people that call and say, when are you gonna scrape the snow off of me? I don't care about the sidewalk. Just get my road clear. And, and we wanna balance out and find out what all of the people's needs are and how we're gonna react to them now or in the future. And, and even the budget, you know? If somebody has a question about the budget or why haven't you bought this or why don't we buy that? We'll be able to answer that between us, I feel. These are good things. And, uh, I, I just feel like it's a good time. We have good reports, even with all the bad news of inflation and everything else. We're working hard and that's where we need to go. Anything else, Norm? Dave? Board council member Hathaway.
I just wanna make a comment that, uh, I just, it's, you know, the new year, I just wanna say thank you to the staff and to all the city employees and to all the hard work and dedication you've done for the city, mayor.
To everybody.
Say thank you to everybody.
Not as board council member.
I would just echo what Dave said. Thank you for all you've done. I don't have anything else.
Okay, let me know what the historical committee says, okay?
I sent a couple of emails already, so.
Perfect. Quite bored, councilman Sitaway?
Yeah, uh, feels like the last council meeting was like yesterday, so I don't have anything to update. And, um, yeah, I go with Dave's side. Just thanks for you, the staff, everyone. It's been a good first year on the council. I think we're gonna, we're, we've done a lot of good. We're gonna keep.
Good.
Keep going.
Thanks. Never bored, councilman Adcock.
It's tough to be last, cause you sound like a, a ditto. But the mayor's really quick to thank everybody for their work. And the only buddy, the only person that knows more about the mayor's time is Colleen. And she knows how much time he's not home. So, mayor, thank you for your vision, for your leadership, for your love of our community. That grows from the roots of Myron and Ethel. And I appreciate all the work and the time that you take. And equally to staff, we joke, we kid. I hope it's well taken and, uh, well received maybe. But, uh, if you read my newsletter that I wrote back in October, I think it was, uh, maybe November, um, I really meant that. Um, I think the six of us are working well together. We're accomplishing much for the good of the city. And especially what occurred tonight. And getting that industrial park and tax base established and, and building Santaquin on, other than the backs of our citizens through property tax. So thank you.
Thank you. Met with some wonderful people over Christmas. Christmas wasn't just time off for the mayor. And, uh, I met with the developer that's trying to get a Chick-fil-A here. I've met with another one that's trying to get an Arby's here. Um, I met with one that's wanting to have two businesses here. One being a very fine restaurant, but you could wear Levi's into. And, uh, we are, we are turning a corner in a tough time to turn a corner. And, uh, the last guy that I spent quite some time with this afternoon on the phone, uh, was incredible. It's not the guy you were thinking of. That was face to face.
Oh, okay.
But the guy on the phone was amazing in some of the things he was asking for. Not only certain properties to buy, but changes to the upgrade and upgrading of our city's face. And, uh, so many of them have looked at the interchange and can it really happen? And when they told me, you know, don't think, count on it for thirty years, I don't have thirty years. This is time to get things done. And, uh, I just wanna say, our staff has been at my side when I've pushed and, uh, probably was uncomfortably pushing them to, let's take one more step. Let's hold to the end of the row here. And, uh, twenty twenty-two, the row is devoid of weeds. And we got new ones growing in twenty-three. And, uh, I, I'm not gonna take a step back. I'm gonna be more cognizant of my time and, and their time. I'm going to put a lot of effort into the, uh, uh, mountain bike trails. And, uh, I'm already set to meet with, uh, district ranger. He contacted me the other night. We're just trying to find a day where we have time. Um, uh, this next week, I should hear from Senator, or from Congressman Owens' office. And they are expecting to have a bid award shortly. With, without that, I'll be surprised because, uh, Burgess Owens should be the head of the transportation, which makes him the boss of federal highways, which controls getting our canyon open. So, uh, he may even be listening to this tonight, knowing I'd bring it up. But, uh, our contacts and to be able to call a U S congressman and have him answer the phone with your name is fun to me. To receive a text on New Year's Eve night from a few of those, but especially Congressman Owens was just kind of cool. And, uh, which means he and a whole bunch of people have their ear to Santaquin. And the goals that we have, the hopes that we have for a new skate park, they're not going away. We're just finding ways that we've gotta be there. The hope that we have for every responsibility, we're gonna find ways. Even in this downturn in economy, we've been wise. We've had to step outside our, our own safety nets and say, we need police, we need fire, we need that protection, we need to go on. We've also got a lot more employees that are looking at us. Are we leading? And I want to say, yes, we are. And we're gonna do everything we can for everybody, every staff member on. And we will help guide this city and work beside those with whom we have a responsibility with. I thank you guys for all you do. Thanks for the night. It's either eight twenty-five or eight twenty-six, depending on the clock you look. But at least it's not a quarter to six. I would entertain a motion from the council. So adjourn, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Oh, roll call.